Recall the June 3, 2024, planning commission meeting to order at 7:03 PM. And I'll start with the roll call. So I am present, I'm Chair Luke Maruziak, Vice Chair Testman.
Present.
Commissioner Smith? Let's see him. Commissioner Kilkup?
Present.
Mr. Krone?
Present.
Commissioner Lambert? Not at the moment, okay. We'll get going and see if we increase our attendance here. So are there any items of public comment for any items not on the agenda? No one present in the chambers? No, move on to move to approve the June 3 agenda as written, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The June 3 agenda is approved. Now we move on to the council liaison report. Recognize Councilmember Johnson.
Hello again, I've got three things that I want to talk about, the first two are pretty quick. The first one is that the council did approve quote unquote the environmental element with a few minor changes from the planning commission version and I put in quotes because we didn't adopt it formally as the comprehensive plan, just saying, yes, this looks really good. We'll come back to it in the fall to just make sure that everything is tight. And then the, we're also going to be adding a sidewalk to 384th Avenue. That's the street that's kind of right back here behind City Hall. And it goes toward the Encompass Building. And that's going to be along with some sewer work along there. There are some homes that are on Septic and we want to provide them with the opportunity to hook up along there as well as just fix a few problems with the sewers it is along that particular street. So that'll be really nice, there's a huge difference in the street having a sidewalk and not. For many people, it's the difference between going outside your home and not, so that'll be nice for them. The bigger thing is the community center expansion continues to move its way through the council. And I just wanted to give the planning commission the short version update of kind of where things sit, the current information that the council is processing. As they move toward making some potentially big decisions. The contractor is pretty close or maybe even is ready to give us a quote for the greatest maximum price that goes to the design build process that we followed, that the council chose to follow, what, two years ago now? However, long it's been, it's been a while, year and a half ago. And right now, the number appears to be close, we don't actually have the greatest maximum price in front of us, but it appears to be close to somewhere around 29 million total, that includes the current design process that we are in, so you can subtract that off there. Given the current administration's funding plan, the city is somewheres around 5 million, a little bit north of 5 million in the hole. And what I mean by that is that we have a bunch of different funding sources that have been identified and accounted for. And if all of those were to be actualized, we would be somewheres around 5 million behind, meaning that we would have to take out what is known as a council manic line of credit, which you could effectively think of as essentially being a bond. Which is very controversial for the council to just do it without a vote of the people, it is well within our bonding limits. Legally speaking, but there are some optics involved with that. We have a tight operating budget. As it is, so that's things like police and fire. And there are other potential increases to cost of living, these also have not been actualized, they may or may not happen, but we are working through a new solid waste contract and utilities continue to cost a lot of money. And that could lead to potential increases in utility costs now. Someone shouldn't look at these different buckets of funds and think, oh, well, why don't they just move the money from this over to there? And, and in our council meeting, we discussed that somewhat extensively. About what the different buckets of money are and why we should think about them as being in these different categories and spending this source on this kind of expenditure, et cetera. So I don't need to go into those details right now, but, but it does have a certain optics to it. If we're spending a lot of money on this thing when we have restrictions elsewhere. Now, the cost could come down over time, let's just say that that was the number, that doesn't mean that that is going to be the actual final price. It's the greatest maximum price, meaning that we would not be charged above that amount, but it could be less than that. Over time, we could find cost cutting measures, it could turn out that that was an overestimate to begin with, who knows? We could also find additional funding from our regional partners, whether that was cities around us, other kinds of governmental agencies. Or Oh, yes, and there's also a King County Aquatics Grant that I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that that number that we're looking for is around 4 million. That, I believe, becomes available for us to apply for next year. So I do not believe that that is something that we can apply for at the moment. But, but that would help substantially if we were to get it. A couple more things that want the planning commission to be aware of is that the there've been several surveys over the years of the public's position on a community center expansion, including a pool. And the support has been somewheres in the high 60s to low 70s. And it was a little bit higher perhaps, depending on how narrowly you want to read the polls before the pandemic, but high 60s, low 70s. But that, those questions did not include any specific numbers about how much it would cost. So there's the old analogy of everybody likes cake, but not everyone wants to pay for it. So it's hard to say how many people would actually support a bond if it were to go to a vote. The, there have been bond proposals in the past that have gone to vote in Snoqualmie, but there hasn't been one in a long time. The population has changed a lot since then, mostly skewing younger, since then, younger families. And those polls did come back, or shouldn't even call it polls, they were actual votes. Those elections came back at north of 50%, but less than 60%, which is what's required in order to pass a bond like that. So they actually failed, even though a majority of our citizens voted for them. The largest community concern in our surveys of the subject, though, have not been around the funding or the cost, but have rather been that the facility would not be large enough to meet the needs of the community. And that is why the current plan does have a lot of bells and whistles to it. We think that based on the community feedback, that the community wants to have a facility that could house one versus one swim meets, meaning one school district versus another, not a large regional swim meet where you get 10 teams together or something like that, but but a smaller swim meets, a zero entry activity pool and a current channel commonly known as a lazy river. The current plan also includes a phased approach, so the number that I cited earlier only covers a pool. Well, technically two pools, the locker rooms and a new entrance and lobby, but it does not include other dry things like new classrooms and new exercise rooms. Those could come at some later date. But by taking this phased approach to the community center expansion, it would at least be a lot less money upfront to the tune of into the millions of dollars. So that is an awful lot of process and it's a lot for us on the council to process as well. It's a very tough decision and I certainly don't want to speak to the intentions of any of my fellow council members. But that's what we're dealing with and any community input would be extremely useful for us to get a pulse on what the community would like for us to do. I'd be happy to take any questions and that's my update.
I will do a round robin, but what is the next milestone for this, or is it still just discussion?
Believe that the next thing will be a greatest maximum price from our contractor and then essentially the council would have to decide, do we want to do it? And that may include the current funding model with the council manic line of credit. I'm not sure exactly what the exact order would be on that, but if we're going to say yes, we're going to have to decide that we are going to get the money one way or the other. So effectively we'd be saying we might take out the line of credit if, if we voted yes on it.
You expect that vote to come up this summer, or is it going to stretch on?
Yes, I do believe that will occur this summer.
Okay.
Yeah, once the greatest maximum price comes in, I believe it's a either two weeks or a month window, but anyway, it's a short window where effectively you have to move on it or else the greatest maximum price expires and there'd be a new negotiation.
Okay. Let me note, I just pause it for a moment that I see Commissioner Smith? Present?
Aye.
And Commissioner Lambert? Okay, okay, so we've got a full house here, so let me do the round robin. Vice Chair Testman, any additional comments or questions? For Councilmember Johnson?
I don't know if it requires an answer or not, based off of where Councilmember Johnson said things are, but certainly in the case of, if the, if the council goes the bond route. Because it thinks that this is important enough to the majority of the citizens of Snoqualmie, then I really hope that equal consideration is being given to access. And what I mean by that is if the city passes a bond, I think it's reasonable to expect that all citizens would have access to the facilities under the same you know, guidelines or whatever, right? Like if everyone has to pay five bucks to use it, everyone has to pay five bucks. If it's a, if it's free access, it's free access, but if it's conditioned on membership of the YMCA, I don't think that's the way to go, so. Again, I'm not looking for an answer, but I do hope the council's considering that, particularly simultaneously with the bond measure.
Yeah, that's definitely one of the things that the council is considering. It's a lot of stuff to think about, but yeah, that is one of the things that's, that's been considered.
Okay. Commissioner Smith?
Sorry, excuse me, apologize, I'm a little under the weather tonight. The, you know, I thought that was, that was a great, a great summary, I, I missed the very beginning of it as I was in the, the waiting room, but thank you for the updates on, on where things might be headed with, with the community center pool.
Okay, Commissioner Kilkup?
Yes, thank you for those updates, of, I what, I can't remember when I shared this before, but it was with is it Jeff Hamlin?
Sounds right.
Does that sound right? It was when he was in the interim role. Then I think it would be really beneficial to engage, especially the Cascade View PTSD, since that would primarily be the young families that would give you a yea or nay on. You know, if you're looking for that community input, I would think that would be an easy access point to see if they want to host something or Q and A or, or whatnot, I'm not very active, but I am a member.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good. Commissioner Krone?
Just one question, you mentioned community feedback, are there any plan mechanisms to get that, or is there any recommended way to? You know, give that to the council.
I should have had this in front of me and actually mentioned it before, there is going to be a CIP open house on a date, Steph, do you remember? It's this Thursday? And do you remember the dates? Okay. Well, we'll find it, I'll get back to you on that, yes, there is that open house. Other ways is you can always email the city council. If you go to the website, there's a link that goes straight to the email for all the council, same thing for the mayor. Are there any other specific avenues, staff, do you know of for community feedback on CIP or the pool? Let me pull it up. Five to seven, because you didn't hear that, five to seven, this Thursday at City Hall is the CIP open house.
Okay. And I'm going to do round robin and Commissioner, Vice Chair Testman, I'll get back to you, Commissioner Lambert? Any comments or questions? Who's Commissioner Lambert? I think he's in.
I don't see him.
He's in the waiting room, actually. Yeah, he must, must have to recall in. So Vice Chair Testman, go ahead, make a comment, and if we could get Commissioner Lambert back in, that'd be good.
Yeah, sorry, one, one, one thing popped in my head, Councilmember Johnson, do we have any updates at all on the model train on the museum?
Nothing that I'm aware of.
Okay. Commissioner Lambert, any questions or comments for Councilmember Johnson?
None, thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you, Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you.
And so we move on to next agenda item, which is item number two, climate change element introduction. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, good, yeah, that's actually very important, yeah, ask the planning commission to please review the minutes from May 20th and pay particular attention to the motion. On let's say the policy items, they meant to capture the pretty lengthy motion that we did at the end of that and unanimously approved, it definitely jives with my notes. And, but I definitely want everybody here to take a look at it and make sure that it's consistent with your understanding of what we had voted on. And with that, I move, we approve the minutes stated May 20th. As written, can I get a second, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the minutes are approved and nested in there, like I said, is that motion that we'd approved on May 20th as well. So the writing there is good, thank you. So I move on to the climate change element introduction. I'm sorry?
Yes, I just wanted to do a brief introduction.
Yes.
We have our consultant team, Chris Green, he is a land use planner, comprehensive land use planner. Here to guide us through the introduction to the climate change element, Chris, are you there?
I am, yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes, Chris, can you take it from here?
Yes, I will share my screen, I've got a presentation that is also in your packets if you want to look at it.
Great.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, yeah, as Emily said, I'm Chris Green with OTAC, we have been working with the city for a number of years on water and natural resources projects and then recently as well on the comprehensive plan periodic update, so. Yeah, happy to be working on this project, the city of Snoqualmie, so tonight it's going to be a pretty, pretty quick introduction, the project's just getting started and we want to and we'll hit the ground running pretty quickly, as the memo mentions, June 2025 is when we're going to have this element ready and incorporated into the periodic update that you've been working on, so it's going to be a pretty quick process, tonight I'm going to talk a little bit about the process in developing this element, but it's a lot of the subject matter as well. And again, kind of from a high level, because it's a, it's a pretty new and pretty complex topic, but just wanted to give kind of an overview. So the basis for this is House Bill 1181, so this was passed in 2023 and it adds a climate and resiliency goal to the Growth Management Act, and then a, an element to comprehensive plans, oops, sorry. And so the legislation itself had some, some goals outlined. Some of these ended up being, you know, translated into the actual products that we'll be working on together in the plan, so. But there's really two big areas of focus, or really three, so kind of a mitigation, adaptation, resiliency kind of group of goals, I would say. And then a group of goals that are focused on greenhouse gas emissions reduction and mitigation of emissions from the city and different cities across the state in the case of this legislation. And then environmental justice being a big piece, you know, advancing policies that aren't going to disproportionately hurt communities that have been typically underserved or are more likely to be impacted by climate change and some of the negative impacts associated with that, so there's really kind of three, three main components to it, and the third one really runs throughout the process. So like I said, there's, this kind of got translated, these kind of groupings in the legislation into two components that cities will have in their comprehensive plan, so the first is climate resilience, and so every Growth Management Act or GMA planning city and the state will be adopting these and at the county level as well. And then the other piece of it, the greenhouse gas emissions piece, this is required for cities in 11 counties, so King County being one of them, basically the most populous counties in Washington. And then if the city has a population of over 6,000 such as Snoqualmie, then it's a mandatory element as well. And I'll talk a little bit about what each one of these entails. And then, so the Department of Commerce, as you're probably familiar, at the stage of your periodic update, there, you know, the Growth Management State Agency that supports those programs, and so they've worked to develop guidance for communities on how to implement this brand new set of requirements. Their kind of outline of what to do on these involves having a climate policy team, public participation plan. But really, the draft climate element, of course, is the big, the big piece of that, and then plant integration, I wanted to mention as well, because there are and Emily notes this in her memo, there are existing policies and there are policies that are being developed in the periodic update that align already with this, with these goals, and so and then there's some, some things that will probably need to be adopted for the climate element that will then potentially need to work well with other elements of the comprehensive plan, land use and transportation being the two big ones, but there's some, some other ones as well. And so there is a piece at the end to sort of weave this effectively into the comprehensive plan. So the resilient sub-element, you know, looking at resilience, for time out, anticipating, preparing for, adapting and minimizing the negative effects, so there's a lot that goes into that idea of resilience, and this is the more you know, reactive in some ways, I would say of these, but then it also includes some components of how do we how do we make these impacts better, how do we make sure that people are safe? Part of that process looks at hazards and what, what impacts and hazards can come from climate change or expected or, or could come from climate change in the next 20 years. And then there's also these sectors to consider, so this is a pretty, pretty big list, but this is, you know, in, in some ways, I would say you know, you'll probably notice in some ways, this is almost like a mini comprehensive plan in some ways, because it is such a broad range of topics, and so, and it affects every piece of the comprehensive plan, so. You know, this list here can give you an idea of how broadly a focus this.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
I'm curious, where forest management would fall into that, forest management wildfire prevention would fall?
Yeah. That's a good question, because it kind of, they would say it probably falls under multiple of these, you know, it is a form of agriculture. It's an economic development thing, there's ecosystems. And then emergency management is a big one for fires.
With forest management, just, is again, there's a significant amount of greenhouse gases that go up with the wildfires.
Right.
Yeah, not just putting it out, but managing so that they don't get so bad.
Yeah, and so one of the things in terms of hazards, you know, they, there's a really, there's kind of a similar list of, you know, make sure you look at all these potential hazards, well, the idea of that is really early in the process and through engagement with both you know, groups like the Planning Commission and technical staff, but then also the community to really identify what are the most pressing hazards for Snoqualmie, and so forest management is one that you know, I think, as you've mentioned, it's, it's a pretty pretty clear one for Snoqualmie, but there's a process to go through to sort of prioritize those, those key areas to work on and, and around Washington, there's going to be different high priorities depending on the geography of different cities.
Okay.
There are, you know, minimum requirements that go with this, so at least one goal and supportive policy for each of the hazards that have been identified, so as we were talking about, there's these hazards that are relevant to the jurisdiction, so. You know, there's, there's things like sea level rise that are not relevant to Snoqualmie necessarily. But if, you know, in another part of the state, that's going to be a big focus. But, you know, as you mentioned, forest management, flooding, things like that are pretty big in Snoqualmie. And along that line, also the King County is in the process of doing a new, an update to their natural hazard mitigation plan, so this process has been designed to kind of coordinate with that. It is a little bit different in terms of the goals of those two processes, this one isn't as explicitly operational and, and focused specifically on hazard mitigation, but it's obviously important to have consistency between those, so. I think the timing is really fortuitous with that process going on as well. So other requirements address these natural hazards, protect and enhance natural areas, and then community resilience is a big part of it, so social, economic, built environment factors. There is an asset identification component to this early in the process as well, so. You know, not just talking about what are the impacts to the community sort of as a monolith, as just the community very generally, but saying, here's, here's assets within our community, whether those be community facilities, organizations. You know, neighborhoods, people. And there's kind of a way to organize that to say like, what are the threats to these assets for our community and how do we mitigate that? So the second part, the, the GHG reduction sub-element, this is the one I mentioned, is not required for every community, but anybody in King County or any of the larger King County or any of the larger counties that are above six thousand in population will be doing this as well. Um, and so this one, um, focuses on incremental targets to achieve net zero emissions by twenty fifty, so this is something that the state has adopted in other legislation, and this is sort of the local, uh, implementation of that. Um, transportation and land use are the big kind of areas where they focused on emissions in the, um, requirements, especially vehicle miles traveled, uh, per capita, so transportation is the largest uh, emissions, uh, source in the state, and it does vary between communities, how, um, significant of a source that is, but for almost every community, that's, uh, pretty significant. And then again, prioritizing reductions that benefit over, uh, overburdened communities, and then uh, the maximizing co-benefits is a really, uh, a big deal to, um, I think in terms of where communities can really, um, you know, treat this as not just like meeting requirements necessarily, but an opportunity to take, uh, to do a lot of really kind of broad-based good things in the community is looking at, um, you know, as measures are taken to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, trying to make sure that those are also aligned with, um, other benefits, uh, to the community, so that um, there's sort, there is sort of trade-offs, but that these are looking for those positive trade-offs. Um, and so that's a theme that, you know, we're going to try to weave, weave throughout that process. Um, so, yeah, again, those requirements, um, the three climate sectors that have been identified, and these are very broad, that last list was, you know, really long, but buildings and energy transportation, and then, um, zoning and development. Um, for, for, um, both the resilience and the greenhouse gas emissions reduction sub-element, the, um, measures, you know, the end, the end product in of identifying these hazards or identifying greenhouse gas emissions reduction strategies, or sort of that policy aspect of it, and then there's measures that, um, need to be adopted, and those can be developed by, um, the communities themselves. But there's also a menu of measures that, um, has over two hundred kind of policy options as a starting point that have, um, been through, um, a lot of study and, uh, have been tried in other places and kind of, um, they're indexed to sort of maximize those co-benefits to the community. Um, but there's pros and cons to each one of those, but there is, there is a starting point for like what measures you actually um, adopt at the end of the process. Um, so as I mentioned, community engagement is a, you know, a huge part of any planning process, but especially this one. Um, the focus on environmental justice makes it even more important, I would say, to actually, um, be talking to, um, everyone in the community and really kind of understand what, um, what impacts might be to, um, different people and groups of people, and um, it's a pretty big component of what Commerce has set forward, so, um, we, one of our first ten tasks on developing this is working on a community engagement plan, but um, that will sort of fill in some of the, um, you know, some of the, more of the detail here, but in terms of approaches, um, technical and community advisory committees, that's one that was identified by Commerce and is, is always an important um, piece of a plan, having, I think, um, you know, city departments and agencies that the city works with engaged is pretty important for this. Um, because of the opportunity to, um, you know, do things differently operationally, um, and making sure that that actually works out, and really trying to get those co-benefits of, you know, other issues that, um, those departments or agencies might, might be working on. Um, identifying vulnerable communities and environmental health disparities, so that's a helpful baseline to kind of see um, in terms of, you know, environmental justice outcomes, which communities might be most vulnerable, um, in the present day, so that that can be, uh, data that goes to help inform the planning process. Um, stakeholder interviews is a really good way, we found, to connect with people that may have a really deep, uh, knowledge or, um, interest, or also those that may not always have a chance to share, you know, in detail through a traditional public participation process. Um, online and in-person open houses, and also visiting events where the community is already gathering is, is a important strategy, and then uh, I would be very remiss if I didn't mention the Planning Commission and City Council Committees and City Council being, uh, also uh, critical forum for, and having these conversations and, uh, engagement. Um, so I know that was kind of a, covered a lot of ground in a kind of high-level way, but I wanted to uh, make sure that we had a chance for questions or discussion, uh, at this point in the, in the very beginning of the process. It's going to go quickly.
So I've got a couple of questions, and I would like to do a round robin, is this, is this the end of the intro?
Yes.
Um, one thing, I, I lived in California for a while, and my son still lives there, and I think they're a little bit ahead of us on a few areas, for example, they would incent, I think we still do electric cars, right? They would also, um, ban on new developments, uh, gas stoves, and since you have electric stoves, then ultimately move into, you don't use natural gas heaters anymore, you use electric heaters, and what they um, are struggling with, I think it's a fair way to say it, is that when you do that, when you take out the wattage of sources other than electricity, and replace it with electricity, you've got to increase your electrical supply. And I wondered if, um, that's coupled, so the reductions of greenhouse gases have taken away the wattage you need for heating your stoves or gasoline cars to reduce CO2, if saying, okay, and therefore, there needs to be some high type of replacement with electric, either through renewables, because you've got the hydro and things like that, uh, or other sources, so I'm just curious, is that coupled with these greenhouse reductions in the global plan?
Um, it is, some of that is kind of at the, you know, more state, state level in terms of strategy, but in looking at a greenhouse gas emissions inventory for um, Snoqualmie, that is one of the ways, the, um, one of the possible scopes to be looked at, so there's sort of different rings and different levels of detail, depending on how broad of a, a look at emissions you're going for, so, um, you know, at one end is just emissions from city operations. Um, I think more common and, and what really this legislation points to is a, at least a minimum, is looking at, um, within the city boundaries emissions that are occurring there, um, but then that next step is the electrical grid, and so I think, um, I, I think that's a, you know, pretty important component, as you mentioned, um, and kind of understanding that that impact.
Okay, okay, let me do the, the round robin, and, uh, Vice Chair Testman, any questions, comments?
No, not this time, Chair.
Okay, Commissioner Smith?
I, I don't have any questions at the moment, I, I, I applaud the effort, I think this is such an important topic, and it's, so I remember going through this process around this topic, uh, we were discussing the environment policy back in the previous version of the comprehensive plan, uh, a decade ago, and, and thinking even then of like just trying to imagine the crystal ball of the, both the challenges that we're going to face, as well as the, the new technologies and innovations that are going to arrive makes long-range planning so difficult in this area, but it's, you know, we got to do our best, and then, you know, adjust along the way, because I think there's, there's technologies that, that are, that are coming closer to reality, that are hopefully going to help us right the course here, and, and we, we may not be thinking about them right now, but, you know, it's, it's great to be kind of taking this long look.
Yeah, good. Commissioner Kilkup?
And no questions.
Uh, Commissioner Crone?
No questions for me, thanks for the intro.
Uh, Christian Lambert?
Uh, no questions, thanks.
Okay, any comments on the, the power, electrical grid, since you're in that, uh, business? No, Commissioner Lambert?
Uh, it's so many comments, um, it's, it, there's a lot that everybody's working on and a long way to go.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough. All right, I think we've done our round robin, thank you very much for the introduction.
Um, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Community Development Director, attention, anything else on this climate change element introduction?
No, but more to come, um, as we unpack it, and we have, um, about a year to get through the material, so.
Okay. Yeah, and, um, I would like to see Forest Management called out, it seems like, just as a additional comment, it seems like every last month, or last week in August, uh, first week in September, we wound up at two weeks of just really nasty air quality, right, and, uh, yeah, I mean, I'd just be curious to see that that's part of the general plan for the county at any rate, so. Okay. At that point, uh, retail district overlay boundaries, to item number three?
Yeah, Ashley Rag, our planning technician. Will be coming up.
Okay.
Sorry for the delay, these meetings tend to be a bit of a juggle for me sometimes. Um, we go ahead and share our screen. So, following the conversation that the Planning Commission had about, um, uh, input concerning the retail overlay. Um, something that the Economic Development Commission had noted was they would like the the retail requirements extended over to Falls Avenue, but when staff looked at the current overlay further, it was noticed that a lot, not a lot, a portion of the overlay is now and/or in the future slated to be, um, open space, uh, it's property right along the waterfront that the city has been slowly buying to then, um, turn into open space in perpetuity due to, uh, the extreme flooding risks, damages to the bank. And so, considering there's going to be no buildings there, let alone retail buildings of any sort, um, in the
Did you, uh, magnify that, so we can kind of get, we're going to ask what you're pointing to right there? Yeah, the picture particular? So where, where exactly are we looking at?
So this area right here is Northern Street.
Okay, okay.
And then this is for Street, so this line of properties that's right along the river. So, you know, the White House, that's going to be demolition. That's, think that stretch, right there. Um, and then these are a few houses as well, um, so technically, in the way the code is currently written, it includes this into the retail overlay. And, so it essentially staff is recommending that, um.
Are they zoned as retail? I don't think that stuff is zoned as retail.
I don't believe it's zoned as retail, I think it's just included in the retail overlay. Um, here, I can pull up a zoning map.
Yeah, I, I think what we were referring to was the existing retail areas that they go, that they remain retail, maybe ninety percent retail. We're talking about things that are single-family homes from, you know, way back when, that at least one case seems like one of us condemned. I don't like that's, we were thinking of that being part of the retail.
Yeah, and I think that is what was primarily noticed by staff, was that this is being included in code language when it shouldn't be, it, like, it doesn't, it's, it doesn't really fit the actual land use of the property, and so we were hoping to see if the commission would be open to reconsidering, um, the the proposal that, that you guys put forward to amend something that started with the Economic Development Commission of adding, uh, falls to also detract from the northern part of the retail overlay.
Okay, I know what area you're talking about, can we go back to the, the, the words and then see what you're proposing?
Yeah. Uh, specific words haven't been, uh, proposed for code that would come.
What would you get right there, recommendation, recommend Plan Commission, reduce reduce retail district overlay and exclude properties from southeast Northern Street to First Street. Located east, east of Raw Road towards the river and within the River Trail Master Plan. Okay, all right, I got it.
This section directly.
Yeah, I, I, I think I understand, okay. Um, that sounds pretty reasonable, before I make a motion, though, let me just, uh, ask if there's any comments or concerns from staff, I just lost my picture, so I'm not sure if someone's got their hand up or not. Is, is anyone have their hands up? There we go. There we go, Vice Chair Testman?
Yes, thanks, Chair, so just so unclear, before a motion is, is, is tabled, um, staff is looking, essentially, if we go back to the agenda that we approved capturing the minutes from twenty May, what, what is proposed really is just striking the very last part of that, which is, quote, increase retail district overlay to include Falls Avenue, Southeast, end quote?
No, um, that addition, uh, we're not recommending to remove, um, if, if you can see what the screen says currently, I put in a quote of what the code says, so essentially what we're asking is in addition to adding Falls Street to strike where it currently discusses the southern leave margin of right away Southeast Northern Street at its intersection with Railroad Avenue. Um, so that part where, what's already currently in the code, um, we're wanting to remove that, but keep the addition of Falls Street, does that make sense?
Yeah, okay, so you cut everything out there, and then be sure to add the falls, got it. Okay, thank you.
Okay, and then scroll down to your recommendation? Okay, so if, uh, just as a point of, uh, protocol, if I make a motion to adopt this recommendation as written in this memo, would that affect what you need?
Yeah, uh, one second, one's coming up.
I mean, you've got this written as, um, to reduce retail district overlay and exclude properties from southeast Northern Street to First Street, located east of Raw Road Place Southeast within the River Trail Master Plan, that, with, with that get done, what you need to get done?
Yeah, so the motion would be an amendment to add this condition, essentially.
Okay, all right, and then again, before I move, is Okay, all right. And again, before I move, is there any other comments from planning? Okay, seeing none. I move that we adopt this staff recommendation to consider to reduce and to alter the motion we made on May twentieth to reduce retail district overlay and exclude properties from Southeast Northern Street to First Street located east of Raw Road Place Southeast and within the River Trail Master Plan. Can I get a second? Second? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
You opposed?
Hi.
Is there a name in there? Okay. Passed unanimously. Okay. Good, good, good clarification. Yeah, that was not the intent of the discussion was to from anything that we had, that I had heard anyway.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, next, agenda number four, training, historic preservation.
Yes, so there was an interest for Snoqualmie specific local history and Dave Batty, the well-known local historian has a few recorded videos. This video is an hour and due to the really rich narrative and the length that he goes to, I recommend we watch all of it, but I don't think everyone has, I mean, I don't have the brainpower to sit here for an hour and actually ingest all that. So I was wondering if we could play the first like fifteen, twenty minutes and then potentially discuss it and then save the other two thirds.
Okay.
For potentially two more meetings.
Yeah, let's limit it to twenty minutes and let it rip.
Okay.
Even adults have compressed attention spans. You know, once she's digging that up, has anybody here attended? The Citizens Academy? Okay, customer Johnson, yeah, okay.
I did as well.
That's right, that's right. I think I may have been the same with you. Anyway, highly recommended, highly recommended. You find out a lot about the city that is just pretty cool.
Yeah, so the first five minutes is essentially uh, an introduction to who he is. Would the commission want to watch that or do we just want to jump right in?
First fifteen minutes, I think that'd be fun, yeah.
Just the first fifteen minutes?
Fifteen, twenty minutes, yeah.
Welcome to History 101. Dave Batty is the official Snoqualmie historian. His commitment to preserving and enhancing be some of our most.
Have been with issue?
Uh, the audio, okay, one second, maybe now that's had a moment to load a little bit.
Significant historic properties designated as landmarks and a comprehensive inventory of historic properties in Snoqualmie's business district was completed. As a result, Snoqualmie received one of the first designations of historic commercial district in King County. Dave was involved with the acquisition of the Meadowbrook Farm and since its inception and continues to provide tours and history lessons to hundreds. On December ninth, two thousand and eleven, Dave was presented with the City of Snoqualmie Lifetime Achievement Award in honor and recognition of exceptional leadership, generosity and longstanding civic contribution and dedication to the valley's memory and history. On December tenth, Dave was appointed as the official, first official historian for Snoqualmie. He has presented the history of Snoqualmie at the Citizens Academy since its inception in two thousand and seven.
How to kill all mosquitoes in the area in just minutes. This simple but brilliant trick you can do tonight to eliminate all mosquitoes.
This is a brief history of the city of Snoqualmie, Washington, nine eight oh six five, and the missing mill town of Snoqualmie Falls, Washington, nine eight oh six six, and the annexation of the little town of Meadowbrook in the Snoqualmie. Through the nineteen fifties, most of the photographs are courtesy of the Snoqualmie Valley Historical Society, and I cannot emphasize enough how exceptional the photo collection is for our local museum. It's pretty wonderful. We had serious cataclysmic beginnings in this valley. Twenty thousand years ago, the Vashon Glacier covered the valley. Between fifteen and eighteen thousand years ago, the Vashon Glacier advanced and retreated multiple times. Each advance created a gravel dam blocking the middle fork of the Snoqualmie and forming a vast lake. Each time the lake breached the gravel barrier, water carrying masses of rock and aggregate rushed in to fill the upper Snoqualmie Valley. Snoqualmie Falls was formed by the Vashon Glacier. Multiple bursting of the gravel dam filled our valley with gravel and boulders. The glaciers paused to create Snoqualmie Falls where the gravel dam pushed the river over onto bedrock. And when the glacier finally receded, the river was unable to cut through the rock and Snoqualmie Falls was formed. The valley filled with gravel is a giant untapped aquifer, a water supply for the future of the Puget Sound area. Should mention that our valley is not V-shaped as if it were cut by a river. It's not U-shaped as if it were cut by a glacier. It goes down and is flat because it was full filled with all of this gravel. The slowly receding glacier left a very frigid and barren landscape. Humans began passing through about ninety-four hundred years ago, making trails over the cascades. The, the Native Americans on the east side and west side beat their heads against that ice. They wanted to, they knew about each other because of of the Columbia River Valley and they wanted to have a more northern route. So they really worked on that as the ice left us. So let's see here. Seasonal human settlement began in the Upper Valley perhaps seven thousand years ago. The issue with when the settlement started after the ice left is a difficult issue that is made more valuable because of the Seattle Cedar River watershed. The watershed being protected, protected the archaeology. And so the, they keep moving the time when we first had humans going over the past back farther and farther as they find more archaeological evidence. So the Ice Age left us with no large flora in the valley. The valley flora became a natural grassy prairie. At some time, the natives began burning the prairie to foster plants used for food such as the native black and fern camus tiger lilies and the small native blackberries. European Americans, the Indian wars of eighteen fifty-five and fifty-six brought militia and forts to the valley, actually three forts. There were concerns that the Yakamas would come west as allies of the coastal Indians and wipe out the whites. Our major fort was Fort Alden located between the river and Park Street and across from the expanded Mount Si High School. The Indians never came and the fort was soon abandoned. That doesn't mean that there wasn't bloodshed, it just was not in our valley. There was a Battle of Seattle. Fort Alden was the most substantial local fort. It had an escape tunnel to the Snoqualmie Riverbank. What this really means is, and I've emphasized this to both city mayors, if we have ground penetrating radar in this valley for any other reason and we can afford to have them check that area out, that tunnel would show up and we would be able to find out exactly where the original Fort Alden was. So in eighteen fifty-eight, a much younger than this picture Jeremiah Borst came over the Cedar River Trail. He dropped down into the Upper Valley and decided to settle in the abandoned Fort Alden. Borst and the other pioneers loved the deep prairie soil and the lack of trees. He planted apple trees and dried the fruit for shipping to Seattle. He grew hogs and cured the hams and bacon for shipment to Seattle. Jeremiah was a very successful farmer and soon owned much of the Upper Valley. He was a very nice guy. We've never heard, you know, we've never found anything negative written about him. He was deeply helpful to his neighbors and often that meant that they ended up owing him more than they could pay back. And so they would give him their, their land and move on because back then you could just go elsewhere and set up another opportunity. So the trip to Seattle from the valley was arduous. First, you ported your goods down the Snoqualmie Falls hill on the other side of where we go down today. If you were lucky, the steamboat got as far as Fall City, which had an S on the end back then. The boat traversed down the Snoqualmie to Snoqualmie, Snohomish and then on to Everett and finally the goods were usually transferred to another ship for transport to Seattle. Boris' early apples were mush by the time they got to Seattle and that's why he started drying them. This is a wonderful picture. We're very fortunate to have this. I wanted to point out in the left-hand side the corners cracked. This is a glass slide. This is a glass negative. And we're very fortunate to have this wonderful little steamboat Alki on the Snoqualmie River near Fall City. Snoqualmie Hop Ranch and Meadowbrook Farm. In eighteen eighty-two, Borst sold much of his land to the Hop Growers Association. The principals were Captain George W. Gove on the left, Richard Jeffs on the right and DK Baxter. And if you ever run into a picture of DK, we would love to add him. The Snoqualmie Hop Ranch was soon billed as the largest hop ranch in the world. John Muir visited and wrote about hops, Snoqualmie Falls and our valley in eighteen eighty-nine. Hops were not just king in Snoqualmie Valley, but in much of Western Washington. The boom lasted about fifteen years until the world market fell due to overproduction and an aphid infestation damaged quality. This wonderful artist's rendition is Snoqualmie Valley in eighteen eighty-nine. Now, we had dated this long before I finally found the original in a book in the, in the Seattle Public Library. We were able to date it as eighteen eighty-nine because in the background there is the railroad. And the railroad came to the valley in eighteen eighty-nine. And it says Washington Territory and Washington Territory became Washington State in eighteen eighty-nine. Uh, in the lower right, there's a, a mill and that's actually a steam-driven mill. And that big barn on the left is the horse barn for the horses that were used to do the farming. Hops still grow in Meadowbrook Farm fence rows. Native American hop pickers came from as far away as the Fraser River in Canada. Only silver dollars were acceptable by the Native Americans as payment. As many as two thousand pickers were needed each year. About twelve hundred Native Americans and eight hundred others. The Indians camped on the island defined by the circular slough near the Mount Si Golf Course that includes today's off-leash dog park. Native American hop pickers and Robert Tarhoun. Robert there in the middle was a, a manager, a hop ranch manager. This is, we're very fortunate. There's lots of hop picking pictures from Western Washington. But most of ones from Snoqualmie are easily identified as Snoqualmie because back there, can you see Mount Si in the background? Yep, they did that a lot with the pictures. Darius Kinsey photo of hop fields. This, this field, if I, I, you know, check this out. This is really kind of where Snoqualmie Elementary School stands today. Snoqualmie Hop Pickers by Darius Kinsey. This is probably the most famous Native American hop picking picture in, in Washington history. Now, you see the scythe blade, that scythe blade on a pole is how they cut the vines loose for the folks to cut, to pick the hops off. First school met in a hop ranch building. Now, this isn't the first first school because the first school was Jeremiah Borst having dedicated folks come in to teach his children. But the, finally, they formed a school district. So this is the very first school after a school district was formed and it was, it was in a hop ranch building. And Lulu Thompson is the teacher. And we have Thompson Street on the ridge is named for her and her family. Now, the, the older boy and on the left is one of Jeremiah Borst's boys. The little girl in front who looks like she doesn't have any shoes on is, is really Ella Pike. And Ella Pike married Bill Fury and was the mother of my uncle, Conal Pike Fury, who we'll see later. The Hop Ranch Hotel, later named the Meadowbrook Inn, was built around eighteen eighty-five and dismantled in forty-eight. It was located in the new Mount Si High School expansion area on Park Street. Big, wonderful building. The Seattle Lake Shore and Eastern Railroad triggers two towns. Puget Sound entrepreneurs decided not to wait for big money eastern interests. They, they were interested in a railroad to Portland, but not to Seattle. So the locals financed the Lake, Seattle Lake Shore Eastern Railroad, which reached the Upper Valley in eighteen eighty-nine. The beautiful Snoqualmie Depot was built in eighteen ninety to draw tourists. The agricultural and timber crops of the Upper Valley could now efficiently reach national markets. Seattle Lake Shore and Eastern Interminus was a Salau Prairie just outside of North Bend. Didn't go any further, but this opened up many acres of timber and farmland to Seattle markets and beyond. Here's the Seattle Lake Shore and Eastern, later Northern Pacific Depot in Snoqualmie when it was quite new. The coming of the railroad in eighteen eighty-nine triggered the platting of North Bend in February and Snoqualmie by Seattle investors in August. Tourism exploded as the railroad brought the beauty of Snoqualmie Falls and Mount Si and the valley's hunting, hiking and fishing opportunities to the world. Entrepreneurs bought lots and started businesses catering to the needs of permanent residents and temporary visitors. This, these are wonderful pictures, so. You know, the, the woman in the upper right is holding a box camera and her friend is holding on to her. Uh, on the left, you can see that, you know, this was not set up for tourists and but wonderful, wonderful work. To have these pictures is really, really priceless. Original plat map of Snoqualmie Falls, Washington. Now, the S for Snoqualmie is a snake. And the F A L L S falls down the falls, which actually happened because Snoqualmie dropped the falls from the name within a decade. Tradition states that Edmund and Louise Kinsey bought the first lots in the new town. Tradition states that Edmund and Louisa Kinsey bought the first lots in the new town. They had six quite entrepreneurial children. Kinsey interests built the first lebry stable, the first hotel, the first dance hall, the first meat market, the first church, et cetera. Three of the boys learned photography from a hotel client and two of them, Darius and Clark, became the most famous of all Pacific Northwest logging photographers. Here's the Kinsey family in eighteen eighty-seven, two years before they came to the valley. Now you'll notice that it says Mrs. Kinsey. Well, she was known in all records as Mrs. Edmund John Kinsey, as were generally married women back then. So trying to find out that her real name was Louisa was kind of an interesting challenge, but I had Methodist church records and they did straighten things out for us. This is the first known photograph of downtown Snoqualmie. And that's a
Yeah, it's a good stuff in place.
Yeah.
Look at that. Yeah, I don't know again, if the Citizens Academy shows this, but we've got such a deep, rich history and this is just a, just the beginning of it, so.
Yeah, that's why I didn't want to like cut up the video. I was like, I feel like all of it seems pretty interesting.
Yeah, we watch at least the next third or maybe the rest of the next time. That is very good. Did you guys enjoy that?
Agreed, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's really kind of precious that somebody so interested with such deep roots in Snoqualmie dug in and put this together and put this together for the city. So, yeah, I'm glad we, I'm glad they videotaped it. Okay. So let's move on to items of planning commission, I'm sorry. Well, sure, yeah, any, any comments, questions?
Makes, I got, I, I've been meaning to go to the Snoqualmie Valley History Museum and makes me want to go even more, so.
Very good. Anybody else? Comments? Okay, and again, we'll, we'll flush that out, but when we talk about the historic district and the things that we're trying to preserve, that was the basis of, of the start of it. Okay, thank you. And appreciate you for, for digging that up and showing that, that it's very valuable. It's good that it's on the website too. So that is a planning commissioner interest. I just want to highlight to the commissioners I had requested on May twentieth that I get from the Fish and Wildlife, the EIS for the grizzly bears. So I did. It was dated March twenty twenty-four and it is four hundred and sixty-one pages, I believe. Long, I can't say that I've read every word of it, but I can tell you it's very, very thorough. And it actually hearkens back to a nineteen seventy-five endangered species law of putting the grizzlies there. So I'm still, still waiting through it, but it does exist. If anybody's interested, I could give you a copy. But yeah, it was not a, not a rash decision by, by any means. So, okay, I just thought I'd follow up on that since I was making a big deal of that the last meeting. So now let me do the round robin. Vice Chair Testament, anything of interest?
Just, just to follow up, and this is to Ashley. Was there any action on or was it applicable, the, the email I sent you on the Department of Commerce's initiative for youth recreational facilities funding?
I forward that to Dylan. He did look at it. He told me that he had seen it before. I can't remember the reason why he said they didn't apply, but there was something making us ineligible to apply for that. But he did look at it and he appreciated that it was sent in, but unfortunately it was not something that we qualified for, I guess.
Okay, okay, bummer. All right, thank you.
Yeah.
That's all I had to.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Nothing that comes to mind at the moment for this week.
Okay, Commissioner Kilco?
Nothing for me.
Commissioner Crone?
Nothing for me, thanks.
Commissioner Lambert?
Nothing for me.
Okay, and I've updated right on the grizzly bears. I think I'm gonna, gonna pass at this point. And move on to the upcoming schedule, future agenda list?
So here pretty soon, this document is going to change. We've done essentially all of the comprehensive plan with the exception of the climate change element, so it's going to be translating to the next six months of the year here pretty soon, but as you can see, we do have the June seventeenth meeting blocked out. Is everyone still on board with that meeting being canceled?
Yeah, it doesn't seem like there's a whole lot to discuss and that we could prepare for July first. Which although the week of July fourth, the first is a Monday and the fourth is a Thursday.
Correct.
So the, the fourth kind of spills on the following weekend, not the weekend that Monday is.
Yeah, correct. And so far, that's what we have slated for July, but since the video is pretty long and pretty rich, I'm imagining we'll also add
Yeah.
a training to continue the, the video that we started today with Dave Batty.
Yeah, pick up with the first picture Snoqualmie, which didn't look very tidy. Very good, okay. Then you have the work, work plan after this?
I'm sorry, what?
Isn't there another work plan after this?
Program. It's not in this packet. I can pull the latest iteration of it. There's been no changes since last time. Do you want me to pull it up? Okay. So this was updated as of May.
So the climate change element is expected to carry over till next year?
Yeah. I'm imagining a lot of that has to do with the ground and community research that needs to go on. Would that be accurate? Yes.
Okay, are there any questions on this? Raise your hand if you have any questions, comments? Don't see any hands up. Okay. Very good. Staff, is there anything else at this point? At this point, I move we adjourn the meeting at eight twenty-two PM on June third, twenty twenty-four. Can I get a second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, meeting is adjourned.